Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Planning Commission for September 10th, 2019. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Wolf, the role, please.
Commissioner Metcalfe.
Here.
Commissioner Bundy.
Here.
Commissioner Chase.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
And Commissioner Bando.
Here.
Great, we're all here. At this point in the meeting, we open it to public comment for something that is not on tonight's agenda. So if you've got something on your mind you would like to speak to, you have three minutes from the podium, and you can start any time. Seeing no one jump up to do that, we will close the public comment section of this meeting and go directly to our hearing item for tonight. This is a new hearing for Number 9, Arrowhead Lane. This is a major design review application to add 588 square foot to a second level and to remodel portions of the first level of the 1953 square wood single-story home at 9 Arrowhead Lane. Before I turn it over to Mr. Boyle, I just want to ask the Commissioners if they all went to the site.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Everybody has been to see this home. Okay. It's got story polls, we've all looked at that, and Mr. Boyle, please.
Thank you. Chairman Chase, good evening, members of the Planning Commission and members of the public. Yes, the project before you is a major designer review application for 9 Arrowhead. It is the addition of a second level on this existing home. The second level will be 588 square feet, added to the existing home, which is 1,953 square feet. So I will go over the project in general, overall, and talk about the findings and some modifications that have been made in the last day or two. Do you want to mention, at your places, you have two comment letters that were received post-Packett, and then you also have a front elevation sketch showing the small revision that has been made, and I'll talk about that in more detail near the latter part of my presentation. So first, starting out with the location, the project is located in the northeast part of town, along, on Arrowhead Lane, adjacent to one of our lagoons, just south of the Center Market Trail, and as you can see, shown in the yellow highlight. Predominantly, neighborhood is made up of single-story homes originally, though more and more two-story homes are being created as time goes by, and as I mentioned in the staff report, if one is to look at, overall, the west side of town, and what they call the flatlands of the west side of town, more and more of the single-story homes are being, I'm sorry, the two-story homes are going up in this area, in kind of the northwest part of this neighborhood, of Madera Gardens. Giving just a summary of what is proposed, the existing home is, existing one-level home is, I'm sorry, that's a, I put a "two" in there instead of a "one," should be 1,953, no, I'm sorry, that is correct, with the garage. My staff report doesn't include the garage, but that includes the garage. So existing home is one-level, 2,392 square feet. The proposal is a two-level home, which will be just over 3,000 square feet, including the garage, on both numbers. The existing height of the building is 16 feet, and the proposed height will be 25 feet, 10 inches, and, which is below the code maximum, which allows the home to be 30 feet in height. And I will mention that that 25 feet, 10 inches, is the original design, and I'll talk about the slight modifications that have been made, as of, again, a couple days ago. The project conforms to all setbacks, and all floor ratio, height, and lot coverage, and no variances are being requested with this application. Continuing on with the summary, again, the existing FAR is 23 percent, the proposed FAR is 38 percent, and the maximum allowed is 42. And given that this is a second-story onto an existing single-story, there is no change in the lot coverage. I do want to mention that I did, there was a typo in the staff report on top of page two, that 28 should be a 35 in terms of lot coverage, as shown on my slide here, 34, sorry, 34 percent, as opposed to what's in the staff report there. Moving on to, showing the proposed and existing site plan, proposed site plan on the left, basically, the building with the second story in a darker gray, second story, again, centered in the existing building. The existing site plan, or is actually the original site plan that the architect provided before additions were constructed back in 2014, which I mentioned in the staff report, was also, was approved by the town for additions to the rear and the side of the home. Moving on, just to talk about the modifications to the first level, really, nothing overly significant is happening with the first level. The main difference is the stairway, which currently exists behind the garage, taking you up to a small loft above the garage. That stairway is being modified to allow one to go all the way up into the second level. Another modification is the living room area, the ceiling is being slightly raised, not a vaulted ceiling, but just a slightly raised ceiling. So that's really the extent of the modifications to the first level. And again, and the proposed second level is shown here, zoomed in to the lower right, you've got a new bathroom, and you've got the stairway leading up to a hallway, and then two bedrooms on either, at the end of the, one at the end of the hallway, and one on the right side of the hallway, and then a couple of small closets. So that's the extent of the second level addition. Again, as we'll see in the elevations, the architect has brought the second-story addition inward from all four walls, and so it's to reduce the bulk and mass, to try to minimize the impact to views, to natural light, and just, again, to try to not have the house be overly looming as a two-story unit. The major change to the single-story, or the first level, as you can see, I'm sorry, the front elevation, is the eve above the garage is changing, so that piece has been taken out to allow that single roof unit all the way across the front elevation. The rooms above the garage, more, the idea is to have sort of two dormers looking out over the front elevation to try to minimize, again, bulk and mass of the project. Rear elevation, similar in terms of, really, nothing being hap, nothing happening to the first level, and the second level put on top with bathrooms, I'm sorry, the bathroom and bedrooms looking out to the west. Materials, I'll just mention, materials board is provided, materials are, the stucco materials are being used for the first level, and then lap siding on the second level, and matching windows for the top and bottom levels. In terms of side elevations, to try to minimize privacy impacts, and I'll talk about this a little bit more, again, they've set the side elevations in for the second level and tried to minimize windows as much as possible. North elevation's very similar, the north side elevation, with proposed on top and existing down below. This is just, again, showing a couple of sections of the building to give you a sense of ceiling heights. This may be a good time to mention that the project is in the floodplain, but is not being elevated, because the remodel is less than 50 percent of the value of the structure, and the applicant has provided documentation with an appraisal of that fact. They also did do, like I mentioned, they did do an addition back in 2014. However, the floodplain ordinance allows individuals to make modifications to their home as long as those modifications are five years apart, and as long as each modification is not more than 50 percent of the value of the structure. So for those reasons, they're not needing and not choosing, they're not required, and they're not choosing to raise the home, and this, one benefit of that, of course, is you don't have that additional height that you would if it did have to be raised to meet So just kind of highlighting the analysis that was done in the staff report, to meet all the required findings for design review, just focusing on really three of the main findings, one, natural light and shading. If there were impacts, those impacts would probably be to the two homes on either side, to the north and south of the property, and that's 5 and 13 Arrowhead Lane. Natural light and shading is minimized, again, because the building, the way it is oriented, and also existing vegetation also provides quite a bit of shading currently, and again, as you can see on the site plan, the homes are quite close to each other at the side property lines. Privacy has been minimized by, again, using very small windows on the side elevations, looking out into neighboring properties, and small windows also with high sills to keep privacy down, privacy impact down. No impacts are seen to the east and west, because there's such a significant difference between homes in that direction. Views, of course, is one of the main topics of this application. I think the architect has done a good job in trying to minimize those views by, again, placing the second story into the center of the home, giving, allowing the view corridors on either side of the second-story addition toward Mount Tam to remain open, and as we'll talk about, they have worked extensively with the neighbor across the way to the east, owners of 10 Arrowhead, who are here tonight, and they've discussed, and we've had numerous meetings, and they've agreed, the applicant has agreed, to reduce the pitch of that second level, and in doing so, will result, I'll just jump to this one, will result in approximately, anywhere from five to seven inches, depending upon which ridge you're calculating, a reduction in the height of the roofs. So that's something that they've, the applicant has done with discussions with the neighbor, and they've come to a compromise, which we're glad to see. Just going back, and I think many of you, it sounds like all of you went to visit the site at 9 Arrowhead, these, 9 Arrowhead, these are pictures taken from 10 Arrowhead, again, across the way, these are all in your staff report. This is just two examples of photos that I took from the two rooms that are facing west, just to give the members of the audience here a perspective of that. Again, you can see them in much more detail in the staff report. So with that, staff is able to make all of the required design review findings, and they're all outlined and described in the resolution that's attached to your staff report, and staff recommends approval of that resolution. And that concludes my report, and any questions I can answer?
Thank you, Mr. Boyle. Turning on my right, Phyllis, do you have any questions for staff?
No, I don't.
All right. Dr. Bundy.
No.
All right. Charles?
No.
Margaret?
The only, the question that I had was something that Dr. Bundy brought up, I think. So when you evaluate whether it has to be raised above the floodplain, it's 50 percent, it has to be 50 percent of the value of the property, is that it?
The modification or the addition of the project has to be more than 50 percent of the value of the structure, so not the land, but just the building itself.
So I think the question that I had was, there's no, there's no consideration of previous changes to the structure, or the previous additions that might have been made, it's just this one particular thing that we're considering, no?
We're just considering this project tonight, but because the time, FEMA allows you to do incremental changes as long as they're at least five years away from each other. So the previous approval was 2014, this would be 2019, so that's a five-year span. So they, the new, the building that has been improved since 2014 was appraised, so they got that value, and then they calculated the value, the estimated cost to do this remodel, and that estimated cost is less than 50 percent of the value of the structure.
I get it. Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Head clear?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. I do not have any questions. So at this point, then, someone will make a presentation for the applicant. So who will that be?
I don't remember.
Oh, great.
Do you want to use my slides at all?
Uh, yeah, maybe, that would be good.
Right, just forward, left is back.
Okay. My name's Liam O'Flaherty, I'm the architect. The overall goal of this was to maintain the one-story nature of the house, because most of the residents here in Corder Madera are one-story, so, and we could only add 588 square feet, so we, the goal was to sort of minimize the impact on the rest of the neighboring houses, because it's right in a cul-de-sac, so everybody knows each other. So like on the sides, I wanted to make sure that it was far enough away from people so they, it wouldn't, the impact would be minimized. Also, it allows me to use part of the attic, the existing attic space for the floor area, which is really helpful, so it sort of buries the second floor into the structure. So that was the overall guiding design, and then, how did I get to the floor plan?
Actually, I don't.
Okay, good, yeah, that's it. I guess I'll look at that one. Yeah, so then, you know, with any second floor, it's always about the staircase, you know, where do you put it, you know? And the loft staircase turned out to be the gem, because it didn't affect at all the lower floor, and it goes right up against the sheer wall for the garage. So the idea was to create the, you know, the wall for the garage as the second-story wall, so, to help with the earthquake forces and create that, so that sort of set up the design, and then the idea was a central staircase, a central hallway where the two, where the three elements popped into it, allowing for a lot of light and shadow on either side for windows and things like that, so creating almost like a dormer effect, large dormers, but a dormer effect for the roof, which is what you see. So, so that's basically the concept of the design. Do you have any questions, or?
Well, thanks for asking. I think that, since you're up there, we'll poll the panel and see if they do have any questions for you before anybody else gets up there for the applicant. Phyllis, do you have any questions for Liam?
Just one of curiosity, I'm glad you lowered the seven inches, the pitch of the roof, but I'm just wondering why you didn't match the pitch of the second-story roof to the pitch that you used on first story?
Well, we looked at it, we looked at the 4 and 12 pitch, we looked at the 5 and 12 pitch, it's on the side elevation, the existing, and if you notice, most of these houses in Corder Madera have multiple pitches.
Right.
So we looked at the 5 and 1/2 and 12, and then we looked at the 6 and 1/2 and 12, and felt that the taller the pitch is almost, the better they was looking, you know, it was more, less squat, I guess, is the, sort of the look. Am I doing that?
I'm doing that, sorry.
Oh, okay.
I just can share that picture.
So, so we went to 6 and 1/2 and 12, just because we wanted, we felt the height, the look was best, but then, you know, we're fine with going to the 5 and 1/2 12, which is on the side elevation, maybe you can go to the side elevation, and you can see the old, the existing house has a, right there, yeah.
So this is, this is a 5 and 1/2.
You gotta grab the microphone and walk with it, so, that's right.
This is a 5 and 1/2 and 12 pitch, right here, so, so we're sort of echoing that up in the second floor, which is fine. But that's basically, we just, we felt that it looked a little bit better without the 4 and 12. There's lots of examples of 4 and 12 pitches throughout Corder Madera, and we're looking, you know, the clients and I were looking at it and just trying to give a little bit more steepness to it, and it felt like it sat better over the first floor, so.
Thank you. That was it.
Dr. Bundy.
Liam, were you the architect for the first remodel in 2014?
Yes.
Nicely done.
Thank you.
Charles?
No questions.
All right. Margaret?
No questions.
All right. And I don't have any questions, so.
Okay, all right.
Who else wants to speak for the applicant tonight?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, right.
This looks like a one-two punch here.
So thanks for having us. We do have a two-page letter to read, I don't know if it's...
If it's, uh...
Casey McGovern and Jessica Foley.
All right. So a two-page letter, pertinent, but, you know, edit if possible.
We appreciate all your guys' time, and thanks for all the effort put into this, and thanks to Greg and Patty for working with us on this, we really appreciate it.
All right, but if you have some pertinent points, please, all right, go ahead.
You know, we don't have new information to bring to the table, I'm sure you guys all want to get home, so.
We shared with you last night a lot of what we were going to share tonight, but we really appreciate your time and effort, and especially to you, Mr. Boyle, you really helped us navigate and work with Greg and Patty, we appreciate your guidance, and just this process was new for us, coming before the commission, so we appreciate your time and we are grateful.
All right.
We can speak more if needed later, maybe?
Hold up a second, let me check with the Commissioners if they have questions for you.
No questions.
All right. Bob? Charles? Margaret? Peter? No, we don't. So we're good to let you reclaim your seats. So I think that we have a lot of information in front of us, but now the presentation is over with, and we'll open it up for public comment. So we'd love to hear from anybody that has something to say. So you have three minutes, and if you would step up to the microphone, identify yourself, that would be great. So, please.
I only had a one-pager, but I'm just gonna put it away, just talk to you guys. So I'm Casey's brother, Patty and I moved out to Marin in 2002, and I was a big reason that Casey ended up moving to Marin a few years later, and we were having families and our kids were growing, so we've gotten to the point now where, I have three daughters, Casey and Jess have four kids, and they're all either at, I got one at Redwood, and then the rest are either at Neal Cummins or Hall Middle School, and so it's been a really cool dynamic for our kids to all be in the same town, be in the same schools, kind of coexisting in town together, so it's been a neat dynamic, and this has been a big deal for these guys, because if they had to move and they couldn't create more space, they might move out of the school district, and that was gonna be a real bummer for everybody, so. Anyway, I appreciate you guys hearing me out and for your consideration, that's about it.
All right, thank you.
Can we, sorry, can we get your official name beyond Casey's brother?
Yeah, we do.
It's Brett McGovern.
Thank you.
Older and better-looking brother.
Well, that's important clarity, right?
We do know this is being televised. It is.
All right. Who else in the family or beyond would like to speak up? Anyone else who would like to say something, please?
Hello, my name is Lauren, I'm Jessica's sister. And I had a little speech, but I'm not getting Wi-Fi, so I'll just have to wing it, sorry. But I'm here tonight just to support their proposal for adding a partial second story. Full disclosure, I have a vested interest in Justin and Casey staying put at 9 Arrowhead Lane. It is where my husband and I got married, so we have a lot of special memories in our heart for 9 Arrowhead, and we live less than half a mile from Justin and Casey. We moved here specifically two years ago, with the sole purpose of being as close as possible to them, so that our kids could grow up together. And Justin and Casey are just overwhelmingly generous, they helped my husband and I with the down payment for our first and current home, they're the only reason we can afford to live in Corder Madera. And last year, we had our first daughter, just two months after Justin and Casey welcomed their fourth child into the world. Our daughters have spent countless days together already, and will, are set to be in the same grade of Neal Cummins and Hall and Redwood, so we really hope that they stay where they are. When they first started this process, maybe a year ago, more, we really watched as they planned carefully and thought about their options. They knew that a remodel would be hard on their family, but also on neighbors, because of noise and time and potential issues with views or shading or privacy, and they went to great lengths in terms of time and money and effort to work with professionals who could help them minimize the impacts to neighbors. Moving to another place was discussed, and we shut that down quickly, but on their end, really, I think that would come at such an enormous sacrifice, this 9 Arrowhead is the only home their children have known as home, and they would likely have to move out of Madera Gardens to find something of the space they're talking about building. Other homes are of similar size or are actively adding second stories. So I think, also in terms of sort of housing shortage and environmental and financial responsibility, when it comes to building new houses or moving into a bigger space, adding an addition makes a lot of sense, so personally, I hope that you guys consider their proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Who else is out there, because I see some other members of the public who could only be here for this, so who else would like to say something? So, excuse me, while I get that shut off, if I can, there we go. The Fitches, would you like to say something? Greg and Patty? No? Okay.
I think we've already talked to you.
All right.
Jessica, we came to talk about...
Great. Thank you, all right. So with that said, and nobody raising their hand or jumping up, we'll close the public...
Wait, wait.
Okay. I spoke too soon.
Hi.
Hi.
Is this on?
Yes, you are.
Hi, I'm a neighbor of all four of these guys, and I'd just like to give my support to Jess and Casey, and Greg and Patty. That's a little hard to do, but it sounds to me like you guys have already made up your mind, and maybe not, so I'd just like to say that I live across the lagoon, and my neighbor, who lives in, we, some of the people call it Little Latherton, it's about three stories tall, I don't see Mount Tam, and I don't even see the sun half the time, and I really don't think it's impacted our life or the value of our property. So is it really all about that mountain? I don't know. So anyway, my name's Ron Collings, and I'm a neighbor.
Thank you, Ron. We'll have you come to other meetings.
We need him.
All right. With that said, we'll close the public comment section of this meeting and bring it back here for discussion among the Commissioners. So Margaret, do you have anything you would like to throw out for us to discuss, or would you express your opinion? you express your opinion?
I think it's a great project. And I think it'll be a good, a very good fit in the neighborhood. As I drove around, there were some things that I thought didn't fit, some expansions that didn't quite fit. But I think this fits as if it was almost originally planned there. I initially had a number of concerns about the neighbors and their feelings about the potential loss of partial views and getting into that whole discussion of what's a primary view and a secondary view. And I'm glad they reached a compromise, and I hope they truly feel comfortable with it. Because I think the loss of any view is impactful on anyone. And although I don't think it would mar the value of a property in the neighborhood, because it's a lovely neighborhood and I think it's highly desirable, I think it's important to people who are living there to be happy with, that they still have what they initially came to the neighborhood with. But if they reach a compromise and they're happy with that, I'm in favor of the project.
Great. Those are all good points. Thank you. Charles.
I think it's a great project. And most lagoon houses, everyone, I tend to like the lagoon view, and that would be my primary. So, you know, so I appreciate the compromise and working with neighbors, because they're a really great family. And it's really, we're all lucky to have them in the community and get to keep them.
Okay. Before I move over to my right, I want to check back with Margaret. And I would like to hear you say the words, "I can make the findings."
I can make all the findings that I have to make to approve the project.
Okay. Charles.
I can also make all the findings.
Thank you. All right. Dr. Bundy.
Yeah, I can also make all the findings. I would like to comment that views are very important. We take those seriously. Privacy and sunlight are also very important. And views are probably the hardest issue that we have when there's disagreement about a project related to loss of views. And I think Casey and Jess have done a great job of outreach and working with Greg and Patty. And even though I'm sure Greg and Patty would have preferred to have you live in a single-story home, you know, they recognize your desire to be able to stay in the neighborhood. And their willingness to give up some of their view and your willingness to compromise a little bit on the pitch to help that, I think, is greatly appreciated. And I'm sure Phil did a good job of reaching out and everything. So, I can make all the findings.
All right. Thank you, Bob. Phyllis.
I can certainly make the findings. It's a beautiful home. I think you're gonna be very happy once it's completed. And I'm sure your family, including the family visiting tonight, are gonna be very happy to have you stay here. What I appreciate more than anything, other than the design, which is terrific, is the way you did work with the community and your neighbors. And it's so important, because I can't tell you how many hours we sit here and listen to people who are upset and worried and threatening each other and whatever. And the fact that everybody worked together, reached for a compromise. Phil, we're gonna put you, get you a license as a mediator, since you did so well. But this is going to definitely be an asset to the neighborhood itself and the community as a whole. And I think your architect did a splendid job, very, very nice.
Thank you, Phyllis. A couple of things that I want to make sure people know about. One is that they did do this extraordinary outreach. As Phyllis says, starting in January, they got comment letters from neighbors of support. And they must have sent flyers in the whole neighborhood. But it's substantial, and that early outreach is so important. But even the Fitches didn't come to an agreement until the 24th hour, but that's all right. I think, Phil, you did a great job documenting the views from Ten Arrowhead that we like to see. We've now experienced the root of defining what those views are that Bob's talking about that become so important. And exactly what is being impeded in each room at what point. And we, you guys have the rules now for taking those photographs. And even though they extended an invitation, I was, felt as if Phil had documented it well enough that we didn't need to go see it over there. So, it was really well done. That was great. And as we've seen, you know, six inches is everything. How tall is King Kong, right? So, that made a huge difference in the project. So, the view that you get back a little bit is very helpful. So, I think, all said, it's a well-thought-out process, a well-thought-out design, and I can make all the findings. So, with that said, who will make a motion for approval of this resolution?
In the matter of major design review application to add 588 square foot to the second level and remodel portion to the first level of the 1953 square-foot, single-story home at Nine Arrowhead Lane, file number PL 2019-0051-GRC, I move that we approve resolution number 19-020 on this date.
Second.
Second.
All right. Thank you, Bob.
Commissioner Bundy.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Bendel.
Yes.
Vice Chair Metcalf.
Aye.
And Chairman Chase.
Aye.
So, go forth, and no more kids. Just kids.
I do want to, if I may, read the appeal statement.
You have to do that, yes.
Following action by the Planning Commission at a public hearing, any decision by the Commission may be appealed to the Town Council within 10 calendar days of this evening. Appeal forms are available at the Planning Department, Cordera Madera Town Hall. Filing fee of $300 is required to appeal.
Thank you. All right. We'll give you a couple of minutes to exit the room with your retinue. And thank you. So, who's reporting on council meetings? Because I don't know.
It was me, and I forgot to bring this stuff with me. So, how about if I reported the next meeting?
Okay.
Was there anything that was...
Yeah, this was the August 20th meeting. I can recap. There's mostly, I had a couple of items on at that meeting.
Yes. I had all the notes and stuff, and it's sitting right there on my desk. Sorry.
Okay. Well, Mr. Wolf, can you rise to the occasion?
Sure, absolutely. So, I guess I'll give a brief report on the August 20th council meeting. There are two items that I had staff reports on. The first was related to adopting a new policy for review of applications and procedures for processing and evaluating applications for right-of-way agreements related specifically to small cell wireless facilities in the public right-of-way. So, it was, that was a policy that I think actually goes back to 2018 discussions we had with the Town Council, who were interested in ongoing sort of monitoring and updating policies related to where and in what circumstances small cell wireless facilities could be located in the public right-of-way. And when Marin County adopted their policies related to this in July, we felt that was an appropriate time to bring forward updates to our own policies, given the fact that we're in ongoing litigation together with the county against the FCC and sort of their orders that limit local control of those things. So, in any case, I mean, we're, we still are complying, we feel, with FCC order. But we now have policies that at least give us some guidelines and requirements that applicants will have to comply with and provide the town in terms of their applications when they come in to apply for deploying those facilities. And we're talking mostly about potentially streetlights or telephone poles, really, in the right-of-way. So, the second item related to actually the hotel ordinance that was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission back in April, subsequent to that meeting and prior to going to the Town Council, we did receive some public comment that disagreed with the approach that the Planning Department had recommended and to the Planning Commission, that the Planning Commission recommended to the Town Council, of exempting the ordinance from SEQA, from the California Environmental Quality Act. And therefore, upon discussions with the commenter, commentator, and we decided that it would be best to go forward and actually do a more robust SEQA analysis on the ordinance. As you recall, the ordinance does allow for additional FAR for hotels. And so, we are currently, we discussed that process with the Town Council, who also recommended that we go forward and continue to do the necessary steps in SEQA analysis. We're currently, staff's currently working on the RFP and sending that out to consultants. It will probably take, we're thinking, six months or so, at which time we would actually come back to the Planning Commission with the SEQA analysis for the Planning Commission's review. But we're mostly talking about analyzing things like density-related items, like traffic and other things that could be a result from the ordinance itself. So, that was the update, and the council recommended we go forward with that. It was a discussion item. There was no action taken by the council, but we wanted to update and get direction about whether the council felt it was still a priority to expend the resources necessary to go forward with that approach. And they agreed that it was a good idea. So, you will see that.
Yeah.
Oh, and they, and we also, I should say, we also talked about the policy, and we took the opportunity, obviously, as well, to talk about the policy and the ordinance that the Planning Commission recommended to the Town, to the Town Council. And I think all of the council members unanimously felt that it was an excellent approach and an excellent ordinance. Then they'd like to see that move forward, so. And there was, they thanked the Planning Commission for your work on that. So, yes.
It belongs to staff. All right. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, what I want to ask is, the concern is the additional allowances over the 40% for the things we talked about. Okay? Not the 40%, not an application that falls within...
Correct. It's just the incremental...
The incremental additions.
Additional floor area that would need to be analyzed, right?
Because, now, we, it wasn't even the 40%. We approved that one that's right by the freeway entrance.
Budget in.
Budget in, and...
Yes.
And that, that could go ahead if they ever decide to do it. I mean, it...
They are. We're...
I think once they got through the process with the architect and the landscape, where they got tired and just were letting it go.
No, no, we're close. Second rounds of building permit review on that. We're close to issuing the permit for that, so hopefully we'll...
Every time I pass that mishmash of paint on a sign in that, whatever design it's supposed to be, I think, why aren't they gonna do something?
Did you not grant them a grading permit or a demo permit or something?
It's all together.
Yeah, they do have a demo permit. I was actually there this afternoon, and there's, there's rubbish, rubbish in the parking lot. So, they're doing something.
Yes.
They're doing some demo.
They're making a mess.
Interior demo.
Progress.
It's not being used as a motel now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I wanted to ask you, Adam, on the 5G, I read, and I don't know if this is why I'm asking, did the council consider anything relative to visual impacts of the 5G?
Yeah, there are aesthetic criteria that are in the policy that mostly deal with the aesthetics and having it be, I forget all the specific provisions, but there, yeah, that was definitely part of the evaluation of the applications we received.
When it came up, Mr. Andrews said at the time, can we not assign some liability to the vendors? Was that also, or ever discussed again?
Yeah, actually, we actually came back in January of this, earlier this year, or February, and we addressed that with the council and updated some of the existing ordinances to make sure that the indemnity provisions that already exist in those documents apply, not only to the applicant, but to the owner of those facilities. So, yes, that's, that's already, we feel confident it's already addressed, and we came back to the council and there.
Phyllis?
Many times, those indemnity agreements don't stand up in court, unfortunately. So, I would suggest you have a discussion with Todd to get in touch with the insurance representatives and see about not only having indemnity written in the contracts, but also having them carry insurance that names the town as an additional insured.
All right. We can, we can take that offline.
Right. Okay. Thank you. So, with that said, we have some meeting notes for August 13.
Oh, sorry. One more, one more note in terms of my report. You may note or see in the, in the agenda that we were tentatively scheduled to come before you next, in two weeks, with the accessory dwelling unit draft ordinance. You know, we're closely following the legislation, and as of even yesterday, there's been major changes to the draft bill. We do think it's going to go forward. It's Senate Bill Number 13, which has now just included provisions from AB 68, but they're, they're pretty significant. And I think it's staff's recommendation at this point that we actually wait until the dust settles a little bit on this before we bring it back. I mean, we still want to do it this year, but we're thinking now the end of October would be a better time to really fully grasp the changes that will probably be adopted by the legislature this week. And then the governor and it has, what is it, Phyllis, 20 days or so to actually sign into law, which we think it likely will.
It's 30, but it's, part of it's 20, part of it's 30.
So, in any case, but just so you know, the current legislation, as of, as of this morning, I believe, does preclude owner occupancy requirements. That's one major thing. It does also have some significant provisions related to the actual, I'm gonna read what's in here, just so you're aware. Again, it's not adopted at this point, but this would be a major change, that it says that a local agency shall not establish by ordinance any of the following. It says a maximum square footage requirement for either an attached or detached accessory dwelling unit that is less than either the following, 850 square feet. So, our ordinance obviously is, as currently drafted, is more than that, so that's not an issue. But then it says 1,000 square feet for an accessory dwelling unit that provides more than one bedroom. And then, more significantly, this other provision, the ordinance cannot establish any other minimum or maximum size for an accessory dwelling unit, a size based upon a percentage of the proposed or existing primary dwelling, or limits on lot coverage, floor area ratio, open space, and minimum lot size for either attached or detached dwellings that does not permit at least an 800-square-foot accessory dwelling unit that is at least 16 feet in height with four-foot side and rear setbacks to be constructed in compliance with all other local development standards.
Not even the ordinary ones.
So, just be aware that essentially, it's, it's as drafted, the way we look at it right now, is that it would exempt from floor area or up to 800 square feet... right now, is that it would exempt from floor area, or up to 800 square feet, ADUs from floor area, lot coverage, and the minimum setback distances from rear yards, et cetera. And that, you know, would override our, some of the regulations we've been talking about specifically in that regard.
That's 68, you said?
That's 13, that's Senate Bill 13.
No, you said one was just there--
Yeah, that was previously in AB 68.
That's what I--
And now, it's been brought over and put into SB 13, so--
Who did AB 68?
Ting. Introduced, and Wachowski--
Yeah, Weiner's good friend in San Francisco, Ting.
So, so a lot, you know, some, potentially some major changes still to consider here. That's--
That's a radical departure.
Yes.
Okay, Bob?
I wanted to say that as, I'm not gonna be here for the second meeting in October, but it sounds like this really relates to just getting, getting our ordinance in compliance with what the state regulations would be. Okay.
Yes. And, and obviously, we were gonna come back with any other comments that we had at the last meeting and put them into the actual ordinance text, so all of you could look at the red, you know, the versions, that specific language that we come up with.
So, precluding the homeownership requirement is a major change?
It's, that's, that's obviously a significant change as well.
All right. Thank you. So, then, does anybody wanna make any changes to August 13, 2019, meeting notes?
No.
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 Move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, we don't have anything else to talk--
No, there's, what about these, the special planning commission meeting notes? They're both included, do those need to be approved?
Somebody slipped a Mickey in your--
Yeah.
Okay.
Your binder there.
All right. Staff error, sorry. Okay, cool.
All right.
Approved.
With that said, let's adjourn this meeting.